What's the final?
I don't care, but you go ahead and vote it, doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter.
I don't know if we're gonna vote or anything, but...
You guys are gonna fight later about who gets to pay.
Okay.
Yeah. It's so much.
It depends on what you're voting on.
Right. So Burr Phillips may, oh, no, let's see, minutes. Let's do the minutes.
Actually, I know, kind of think that John Allen is on his way here, he and I were at the same meeting. So he's on his way down.
I'll believe it when I see it.
Alright.
He could've gotten distracted. Or a tree could've come down.
You never know.
He didn't have a chainsaw.
Run down the falls.
And he couldn't get here. Now, is this rendition of the minutes what you had?
I...
This is your edited version?
I believe I re-edited this particular topic, yes.
I didn't catch up, I wasn't here.
Well, I move we accept it.
Oh, second day.
All in favor?
I agree.
Any opposed? Minutes are accepted as edited. Let's see, is there any, anything not on the agenda, folks, that you didn't talk about? Nope. Burr Phillips is not here, although I did call him. He was gonna put that on his schedule and be here on the 12th of September at 7:00. And I promised him I'd put him right at the top of the list.
When did you talk to him? When did you talk to him?
Just last week.
He's usually good.
Yeah, he may come along.
It's early.
So then, we're gonna roll right into the ongoing discussion of the master plan. Oh, as far as the North Country Council, I checked, I don't know that there's a check, that initial check has gone out yet. I was hoping that John was here tonight, 'cause I was gonna ask him. Julie thought it had at least been discussed. I said, "We had voted on it, passed it on to the selectmen, and we're hoping they would, you know, move it right along."
They need to get it out there if we're gonna be able to meet our time frame and have any some recommendations before sending out a master plan survey thing.
Right, and I think all things as far as the timing goes, is we're just gonna have to live with it. You know, you get the good plan, you know, we want this to work out, and we want the mailer to go out with the tax government. Who knows?
You know, I know they said at North Country Council that they're busy a whole lot of times. I think the second Thursday is not a good time for them. Maybe what you wanna do is hold a special meeting or a conference with them by yourself or whatever.
I talked to the woman about that, and she, and I said that a special meeting would not be inappropriate. I'm also trying to get, now, what is the information they need, the digitized? Digitized, that is the correct word. I tried to call it digitalized, but that's not a word. Digitized, is it?
The tax maps, I think?
Yeah, is, but what would you call it, it's not GPS, it's? GIS?
GIS, yeah.
GIS.
I think they also call it maybe Granite, I don't remember if it's the same thing or not. See, I am not wrong, here he is.
Look at him, in all his glory.
He has a name tag, doesn't he? He forgets. You can hear him.
I'm not sure what stands for it.
Geographic Information Systems is the GIS, and then there's also Granite is the major sort of map version, I think, that they often wanna work with, and I believe the two are compatible.
Or Granite is a type of GIS program.
I think so, I don't know. I think so.
We were gonna ask John about the check.
I will. Are you gonna just finish up with this little discussion, Liz? So, really, to enter the dialogue with her, I'd need to get the check in her hand, but then, I'm gonna try to get Julie to... Can you just send that on, you know, computer, to computer the GIS information?
Probably, or, it may be too large to be able to email it, but you can put it on a zip drive or on DVD.
Okay, well, we'll get one of our crack computer wizards, gurus. I think that Ann can do that, 'cause she does it with the state, getting like the testing information back. So I'll see if she can help, if Julie doesn't have, I think she may be able to do it. Just push the button and off it goes.
It's magic, isn't it?
It is. It is magic. But then, within this North Country Council, we're still looking for the selectmen to sign a check to send to them.
To the North Country Council?
Yes. There's no invoice, because this is a, the initial down payment for the build-out. But we, I think, was it last month we approved it? Yes, I believe we did the vote on it and passed it.
Item on your budget for that?
No, it's on, it was on the town warrant.
And it's on the contract that you guys signed, I believe. You might have written the contract, I think it was supposed to be sent with the contract, so you might have already done it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought that would've been done by then.
Two months ago that we voted for the country council, yeah. And you were gonna put that on your next meeting, so that would've been...
Okay.
Do we know it hasn't been done?
No, we just don't know whether.
Question.
Oh, okay.
It was still just a question, I asked Julie in the office, and she wasn't sure.
Oh, check, oh, check.
And if it hasn't, maybe you could just push along.
Would it be made out to just North Country Council?
I think North Country Council.
I think it's almost fell down on the contract, what they're hoping for, where to make it out, and so on.
Okay, then it was brought to my attention, need for a long-term budget on town capital improvements. And within the discussion, I said, "The last master plan that we did, I think we did a good job of that. I think we really projected into the future." But they were looking for something that we, I think that we would create to start with.
You're talking about capital improvements plan? 'Cause that's different than the master plan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, see, I have it down here as capital improvements, and I must've started my dialogue wrong.
I think that's probably something we oughta review each year, isn't it?
And then it should be done every year, but I don't think that it's been generated anyplace else in town except here. I think this is where...
I think that's where it's supposed to be done.
And I thought perhaps it will run along with the master plan for this time, just to get it started, get something down, because...
Well, we have two capital improve, two, we've done capital improvements plans twice. Well, the second one was an update, and I think we could take that and update it. In fact, we had quite a presentation, public hearing, et cetera, et cetera. I think there was a PowerPoint that went with it. So...
Right.
Do you recall that, so?
No. Time just...
I bet it was 2011, or maybe 2010.
Yes, right. I mean, I could probably figure that out at home, 'cause I may have some documents.
Probably on the website.
Well, we used to have it everywhere on that table, I wonder if it's still there.
So, I mean, we might have some of the, we certainly have the format, and we just have to improve the information.
Kind of needs do we have, though? What kind of needs do we have?
This came to me from the office. I don't know what, where the discussion had started, but we've always had a need for long-term budgeting for capital improvements. So that way, we could kind of smooth out the costs, so they don't spike in any one year.
And the bridge is an issue, bridges, roads.
Right, I think there'll be a lot with the highway development. We've pretty much got the library sewed up. The garage should be functional for quite some time, so I think it's actual, you know, infrastructure of roads.
The old library may be possible.
Yes, I don't know, right, and moving it onto town property, so that we could use it for anything.
Is that some information we're gonna get from the master plan, in terms of the data, you know?
Yeah, I think we could, you know, question where we're going with, you know, long-term goals on roads. Long-term goal in the old library, I mean, we've got a committee, but I don't know where that's headed, to be truthful.
Well, what was done originally for the first capital improvements plan was that all of the different departments of municipal government were polled and asked, you know, what capital improvement, capital expenditures do you see going out into the future? And you kind of prioritize them into wants and needs. And that information then was all put together and used as a timeline, trying to figure out like for, we already have a fairly good procedure for buying vehicles. Police crews are there, they're on a schedule for that, as well as town trucks and fire trucks and so on. We've been, we have capital reserve funds for many of those, which we vote on each year. So we have, for those items, a fairly good, ongoing budgeting. But I think it, at this point, it might be good just to contact the different departments and see where they're at, and see if there's anything exceptional that is needed. And the one thing that keeps getting left behind is roads, not just daily, you know...
They had to turn a lot on roads. Poor Martha Fronum that got forty thousand dollars and knew who was lucky to get it. You'd spent how much this year, four hundred thousand or something?
Bridges is what I'm concerned about.
Bridges are a mean thing.
And I think part of it is, we've discussed, added an item about road, simply sort of resurfacing versus road rebuilding. And of course, the road rebuilding is far more expensive, and maybe we just can't afford that, but I think we've often discussed that dilemma.
Barbara has just done it on the lower end of the Dundee Road, not a very big stretch. And they did an even smaller stretch, I think, a year ago.
Before.
But it's amazing how well it's held up. It really, 'cause they rebedded it. Right, I mean, it cost a lot of money, but, I mean, they went in, they ground up all the asphalt that was there, used that as part of the bedding, brought in stone, bedded it, and then put the asphalt down. And, I mean, it's quite obvious on the Dundee Road which section it is, because, I mean, it just jumps out at you. And it's smooth, and it's nice. But anyway, so there's...
So I think Sarah's comment about getting proposals from the various departments, as I'm sure Jay Henry knows about the Dundee Doo.
Oh, yeah.
Would give that some thought.
And then bridges.
Bridges are...
We're gonna have to come up with money for that, right, there's matching funds, but still, we have to spring for a good part of that. Is that a sixty, forty, or?
I'm not sure.
Okay, well, but this is what, in polling the various departments, we'll find that information out.
Dick, you did mention the old library. I think John can confirm this, but what I understand, the old library, the old library has contacted with Fritz at the Wentworth thing they were talking about, putting in a...
Septic.
Septics and all to the library, so I'm not sure if they're really gonna wanna move or not, so that's something to consider.
That's gonna be, that's gonna come before the town for vote on money.
I think, no, it's coming from Fritz.
Oh, he's gonna, I thought he was gonna give the land. He's gonna construct the...
Give an easement, I don't know if he gave the land, and then he just...
Right, or some kind of lease or easement, but I didn't think he was gonna pay for the septic system, that would be really expensive.
I only know that they're talking about doing, 'cause they're gonna tear up the road, it's time, it had to be done in a hurry. For whatever, cool, needs to be done or whatever, I'm not really quite sure along with that, but...
Okay. Well, you know, it has legs of its own, and it'll move along. But if I can have like two cents in there, I'll ask them to move it onto town property, and then we could do whatever we want.
I agree with you on that one, but...
We wouldn't have to ask anybody, we'd just have to ask the town.
I'll let you in, I mentioned that.
Oh, I know.
Moving it.
But it was moved there.
That's right.
That was eighteen centuries ago.
Right, and what did they know? Or have we forgotten all that?
Didn't they all, didn't they all get to doing that as well, and the price was outrageous to move it?
I don't think they got a price. If you're gonna move anything, call Dick Foxon or Fryberry.
Right. I mean, this is...
I don't think that was ever considered, if it was, I don't recall.
I did mention it.
Did you?
I don't think it's ever been considered, and I know that, not priced, but I'd be surprised if it was, what, twenty-five thousand dollars?
Depends on whether you have to move electric lines.
Right, that's where all the expenses, having the, you know, power company take it down and put it back up. Or the lower ones are the telephone and data, anyway, but it's all, it's done on a regular basis in this country.
Two buildings that we haven't improved is, well, we did a little bit to grace in Garage, so that, that might be one considered. And the other one is the old Garage here, we just kind of walked away from it. And I, I have a feeling Jay, in his mind, may have plans for that.
They painted it and everything.
Well, the fire department...
Yeah, but that isn't in that bad a shape, for what they use it for.
Right. But it may need, just throwing it out there, for capital improvements down the line, those two buildings, or the old town.
Should, you wanna start breaking up into interest groups now, you wanna talk to Jay, or get him started? It's gonna take a while, because you're thinking about the budget right now. To think about the budget for the next ten years, or even five years, is, you know, takes different thinking. But we should initiate the conversations, so we get it going. Well, I see him fairly regularly, so I'd be happy to get him, police department...
Need a bear cat.
You think we could get one?
Don't even suggest it to Carl. Till next time.
We could borrow Manchester's.
No, Conker just got one, we don't need one.
Did Conker get it, or Manchester?
Yes, they did.
Yeah, it was Conker, I think.
Yep, Conker just got one.
Manchester, they're a bigger city. Anyway, I guess we won't have one of those. Okay, so that's two of the things on this business. How about, have we worked the questions for the survey?
We did go over some, something.
Yes.
Ben had a lot of little details about it. Bring the survey with me.
I didn't bring my survey, but we did cross some off.
If you need it.
How far along it did we go?
I don't, I wasn't here, so I'm not sure.
I think we went all the way through it, but I'm not sure it's really worth us until we know the results of the build-out.
Right, but we know things that we can eliminate now.
Well, we eliminated a lot, and then the minutes show. So we were gonna eliminate everything that had to do with the library and its expansion, and the question about lighting, you know, the dark sky. We decided we weren't gonna have any leading questions, so S.T. and you were not wanted. But I think we'll know much more once we do the build-out study.
Okay, how should we phrase questions on the school? School is gonna be, I think, a pretty large issue, in that we're right on that cusp. There's going to be a discussion of closing the school.
What evidence is there that this isn't just a cycle that the town has gone through in the past?
They've always gone up and down.
It's just like global warming, we have no idea.
Well, I thought, I heard people say that it was sort of different this time, I'm wondering what, why do we think that?
Well, before, Scott, your town, surrounding towns weren't losing, you know, going down, Batlet's lost a lot, Conroy has. All the towns have lost.
But also, hasn't Jackson gone up in numbers, aren't we around fifty-three or more now?
At the grammar school?
I think so.
It was up to forty-nine, there was a couple of towns.
Forty-nine, and then we got a new kid, and then, I don't know what's happened with the children of teachers, if we've got any of those coming in.
We do have.
Yeah, I think there's two or three of those students.
Which is averting disaster, I think.
But on letting the teachers do that, have they considered when the pupil cost fractured into their pay? Because that's, I think you better check, they should check the legality of that.
Well, that's a school board issue, really.
I know it, but I'm just mentioning it, because everybody, and I don't want it to go from the school to the town, it would be like an octopus.
Would it vary from state to state? Because over where my daughter is, they have all the teachers that are there from out of town, all have their children go to the school there, for the same reason.
I would think they'd have to check it out.
Yeah, the school did check it out, as I heard, I was on that enrollment study committee, and we were examining the issue and got the school board involved, and the school administration, and we reviewed what Waterville Valley does, and some other towns. It seems personally legal.
It seems, I've never understood why Jackson doesn't have with Barbara, at least, some sort of reciprocity program. Because there are plenty of parents that love their kids that go to a smaller school, and there are plenty of parents that like their kids to go to a larger...
Right, want their kids to be over there by fifth grade or something, if they're gonna be there for the middle school.
So why we don't allow, up to a certain number, you know, you go past a certain number, and that causes, you know, additional... There's a politics of who's in, who's out, you know? I mean, the Conways, I would do that, you know, when you're, when you live in North County, Conway, East County. Pretty much a top, there's no cap there, where Jackson would have a cap, though. Right, as long as you establish a cap, and then say, if you, you know, beyond this, then yes, you have to pay, I mean, the amount is exorbitant.
And we might not be able to take a special needs kid, who would have needs that we can't even mean or something.
But, then why not?
But we've had students from Batlet, and they paid tuition.
Right, and vice versa, but it's, what I went through was eleven thousand dollars. And that's like going to, you know, it's like a college or a state college tuition, which just seems ridiculous.
Because when Dean Croft wanted, before they built, they rented here, so their daughter could go.
Well, and at the school enrollment study, we were talking about having a fee of something like eighty-five hundred, to make it competitive with other area schools. You know, granted, it costs us eighteen hundred or something, or whatever they say, to educate a child, but at the same time, if you have forty children, you're paying eighteen hundred a year, and you take in two other students, you're not gonna pay more, and you're not gonna pay the teachers anymore, or whatever, just 'cause you're taking in some more students.
Did, has Jackson been successful at all, I know they're marketing or advertising to, you know, to bring in students?
My understanding, they're not gonna start that until September twenty-fourteen, they wanted to start, I think, with just the teachers' kids.
I thought they were already...
There was a lot of pushback on that idea from the other schools.
I think the boards had no, not yet, September twenty-fourteen.
I mean, personally, Jackson needs to become a more attractive school, he's successful at that, but... I think it is, my basic question was, we've gone through, the town's gone through this discussion of, you know, what are we gonna do? The school's about to, you know, get so small, it's not worth it, and then it rebounded. Is this just another cycle like we've been through before, or is it... What is the minimum number, I've heard everybody throwing around forty-nine to fifty-three. I think it's gotten down into the twenties.
No, one time it was seventeen. When Barry Whitney and Rachel Dusset wanted to close the school.
That's a good couple of years ago.
Yeah.
But there was a year, only Jessica Bennett was the only one in her class.
Yeah.
She was the class.
Well, I know, the reason the enrollment study started was that they said there would be a projection that if nothing was changed, that within five years, they'd be down to thirty-five students. And they were worried that that's a problem, just in, you know, one kid in the class, nobody able to compete in soccer, you know, various things like that, so.
So there is no actual number that says after forty, you know, the school's got, you know, we can't, we can't keep it running, yeah.
Well, you can always keep it running, and it doesn't cost the town anymore to keep it running, whether it's sixty students or six students. It's just, it's basically said, you know, it's more of a quality of life for the students, you know, in terms of-
Competition.
What are you giving them?
Having good sports teams, having peers that they're studying with, you know, I mean, you don't wanna have one student in a, in a grade, I don't think.
From what I understand, the school's fabulous. I mean, they have really almost a one-to-one basis with the children. And I don't think you could ask for anything better than that. I mean, the school is a wonderful school.
I don't, I'm not involved personally anymore, but the opinion is too different, yeah.
Oh, really?
And it's interesting, as you mentioned that, I think, is it Kristen Rose, is that her last name? Has done a study of what's happened to Jackson Grammar School kids after they've left the grammar school and tracked how many have done, how many have been in college, how many have had to drop out of college and so on. And in Jackson, compared to other schools in other towns, I think our kids have done really, really well. And that, that itself is a pull.
Yeah, it can also be a demographic effect as well.
We're not gonna admit that.
For what, for what, for what? My, you know, my brother and his wife, and I recall I'm fairly aware of, you know, I mean, he's, my brother's now on the school board. They're homeschooling.
I knew that.
I didn't realize that.
And it's because they just are not satisfied with the Jackson branch. But in any case, again, there's a point, I mean, personally, my feeling is that having a school in town is, is, has far greater importance than just providing education, as important as that is, but that it really is an essential cornerstone to a real community. But forcing kids to be an only kid in the class is certainly doing it the service, you know, to the child. And so it's, to me, it's probably more, if it were really, if, if, if the student body population is really shrinking, and that's the trend, then it's really not so much a question of do we keep the school open, it's more a question of what do we do to bring more children into the community.
Has anybody looked into seeing what they're charging at that Robert Frost School down there? I mean, I know there's-
I think Kristen Rose looked into it, and I know when she was making the recommendation of eighty-five hundred, she was saying this would make us competitive with the White Mountain Waldorf School and with other schools in the area. So I'm guessing it may be, although that's a public school, so I don't really know how it works. The charter school is a public school, though. I don't know how that works.
I didn't know charter schools were public schools.
It is.
You're talking the Waldorf School?
No, the- No, the Robert Frost School.
Timberlake.
So I don't know why people pay for that. If it's the town pays for it instead of money, but I, I've heard that charter schools take money away from the public schools.
Yeah.
But I don't know any details.
Okay, I was just curious what their, what their rate was or something.
Yeah.
Probably some formula.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So maybe a question for the survey is, what's it worth to the town to continue a school? And should, you know, should the town invite students from, you know, local neighboring towns that know, know tuition, just to keep enough kids in the school to make it up to five hundred?
But you're using your checks, dollars.
If you put that on there, everybody's gonna vote it down.
Well, it's just that, again, it doesn't cost the town any more than what the town's already paying. And if there's value to having a, a school in the town, you know, why, you know?
Now, these ones you're inviting in, are you gonna go pick them up?
No, I think, I think there are parents that would be happy to drive their kids to the school.
I'd like to see some kids on the school bus.
Yeah, me too.
That's my opinion.
Well, I know when they had the Montessori school here, you know, preschool here, North Conway parents were dropping their kids off. Very much a North Conway thing as well, it's just Jackson. So people wanna do that.
And they're saying interview people if they wanna come as well as-
Because of the smaller classroom size and the reputation that Jackson's school has.
Is our town's single biggest, and I'm asking a question here, is our town's single biggest problem the fact that, you know, I know all the towns in the North Country have an aging population, but is that one of our single biggest problems that we're facing over the next ten, fifteen years? An aging population and not enough children moving in to the areas?
So is it a factor to that?
I think that's quite major.
Yeah.
I mean, land costs are so high, the average family with young children are gonna be struggling to afford it.
And I know at least three families, just recently in the year, last year or two, that have bought land in Bartlett and are, you know, hoping to build or are building, you know, homes there, you know, young couples. And, you know, maybe, maybe that's okay, and maybe we can lure them into the school district at least. You know, like you said, you know, accept what our school, you know, does best.
You need better pay in jobs, that's one of them.
Well, I know that's the biggest problem in the, I think, in our valley, period, in the area.
And it hasn't changed in fifty, fifty-one years, and it isn't any damn different than it was.
Yeah, and when you've got a tourist-oriented economy, you're not done with the jobs that pay a lot.
Right.
You know, we're in that bind.
But it's always been that way, they say.
Exactly.
It hasn't just occurred.
But the biggest help towards that has been probably the incubator in, you know, Conway. They, they have made some strides towards trying to attract business, trying to develop businesses that would pay better jobs. They haven't, you know, they've done what they could, but that's, at least they, you know, they went somewhere with it. The biggest problem is jobs, yes, we know that. But, but at least they, you know, they've done something towards it. I don't, I don't know when our survey comes around, but it seems to me we should be asking questions about how to attract young families, you know, how do we, you know?
I think that's really the question. We're not gonna get light industry in here. We're not gonna have, you know, some manufacturing in Jackson.
No, Jackson.
So, but I think you hit it when you say, how do we attract young families? We can't maybe provide the, the job that gets a young family here, but we could maybe provide the ability to have housing here.
Or the school.
Or the school.
Well, Conway would attract, bringing the jobs, and Jackson wouldn't attract.
Where you wanna live.
Yeah.
Well, I think we also have to address the fact that, you know, our, our lot sizes are huge. People can't afford to spend a hundred thousand dollars on a piece of property and build a house on it. So I think we have, you know, the two-hundred-foot frontage and fifty-foot, you know, if you have a big chunk of land, it can divide it into four or five properties as opposed to just two because of the lot size, it might help. I know some, we just sold furniture to two, two other couples that moved into Jackson, but they're second homeowners. They're not year-round home, they're, they're young, they're from Boston, and they're gonna retire up here eventually, but they're not-
Not with their kids.
Not with their kids. I mean, there's, those kind of ways of trying to, to deal with that.
And that may be it, is, you know, do some work on, you know, lots, setbacks, make it a little bit easier to have a more modest place. And maybe a landowner can subdivide to allow for that if there were some give and take. I don't know what all the answers are, but it's certainly well worth a question.
In doing the build-out, are we able to plug in any changes to our zoning to see what different results will be?
I think that is one of their proposals, one, one element of it.
That'd be interesting, I mean-
At the last meeting, I, I queried that, and I didn't find it in their proposal as to, that, that what, it's lame to say only that they were going to do the, the build-out with our current situation and not show how, how it would change with, by changing zoning regulations.
Can we ask them about that?
I was suggesting we did it at, at the last meeting.
That'd be interesting, to see how many more lots would be possible if we went from two-hundred to a hundred, be a frontage or whatever. But of course, all that requires that, prices don't go down until land goes on the market, which does require people to subdivide and, you know, are there, is, you know, maybe a question is, how many developers are there out there that are looking to subdivide and would then subdivide further than they can now? Given, given the number of subdivisions that we've seen over the past three years, four years, and a year, that, so there doesn't seem to be a lot of pressure to subdivide according to any sort of lot size, frontage, et cetera.
Right, well, you have to have the owner of the land wanting to subdivide. I mean, there are large pieces of land, but those owners may not necessarily be thinking about it.
The past four years, the period, you know, and if it does want to subdivide because- Well, the side effect that, too, is you increase your population by fifty percent. Think of all the, you know, how difficult it's gonna be around, getting around town if you have that many more people here, too.
It'll never be fifty percent.
Well, if you subdivide all lots, I'm just saying, you know, a certain percentage is gonna increase the population here, it's gonna be that much harder to get around.
It's also gonna increase the services.
Services, that's right.
You know, that's, that's the downside of that, more people here.
And you've got a lot of bad land to deal with. It's never been addressed, your bad land.
The population's gonna increase, period, and it's just a given. You know, we just don't know how much, why, and how rapidly, you know, but it has to go up. It will not go down. Yeah.
Can it's down to eight forty now?
But land in Jackson's so desirable, you know, every other person that walks in my shop says, "God, we'd love to retire here." And the tourists just go, "Oh, please, no."
That's two people.
Well, that's it, that's, that's who's going to buy that land, and that's who's going to retire here. It's going to be retirees, that's what Jackson, you know, draws.
Well, at one time, it was advertised like that.
Retirement office.
That's right. I'm just saying it was.
One big gated community. Gated community.
Yeah, Dummer looks better every year.
So you just gate them in?
Yeah, just gate them in, like a concrete wall.
Like Fred Lucy told me one time, "Bee, we should have put a fence up there, and as they came through, just shot them."
Okay, anybody else have pressings?
I guess we're not gonna get Burr.
No, I think they missed Burr, I'll give him another call.
What was that regarding?
Old workhorse, sounds like he was an old workhorse. And I wrote myself a note to ask him about septic rigs, wildly serious.
Well, will you hear what, I had asked him about that, there are two things.
No, I wasn't gonna hear that, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right, it, it should be an ongoing. But one of them was, if you just increase the size of the existing system for an in-law apartment or something, you can do it in the one-bedroom, one-kitchen increment if you do a freestanding separate system. It has to be a three-bedroom system.
Three or two?
Two, I'm sorry.
Two bedrooms.
Two bedroom is the minimum in New Hampshire. So you, so if you're only adding a kitchen and a one-bedroom as an in-law apartment.
To the existing system.
To the existing system, you could do a, have less impact on your lot. If you did a separate, it would have to be the two-bedroom design.
Now, is that feasible to take a system that's already in the ground?
Sure.
And?
It's just like rebuilding, you just extend the leach field. So, you know, if your system fails, they come in, your tank's good, they pump it out, it's no-
Yeah.
And so there's a concrete tank, a distribution box, and you just extend the laterals. So you just make it a little bit-
As long as you've got the room to do that.
Right, you have to get the-
Right.
Yeah.
Setbacks and all that.
Setbacks and wells and all the rest of it, but it's less of an impact then. It makes it a little easier to, to do the in-law. What was the other thing?
Than a two-bedroom one.
That's the state, is that what he was referring to, the state code on the septic systems?
Yes. But let's keep asking, stuff changes, and if we can make it easier, I think that in-law apartments are certainly part of the answer.
It is.
They're part of the answer.
Just enroll people then.
Not my in-laws, no. Thank you.
Thought we were not trying to make enroll people's place here.
All right, we'll put up the gates. Anyone else? I'm not gonna answer that. That might be broken.
Yeah, there's gotta be somebody finding, trying to find the hours. I do it. You know, you know you're not gonna get it.
Walk over your ladder, come on.
But at nighttime, you know, you can, you know, I always forget the hours of the office.
Oh, you're gonna get the answer.
Yeah, you get the answer.
All right. All right, sports fans, that's old business, new business. Anybody bring snacks that we should eat before we go?
Well, I was just wondering, on the master plan, we seem to be spinning our wheels a little bit here. And if we're going to be doing a revision of a plan, we need-
Just think to myself, sorry.
Okay.
You go right ahead.
I have, this was in some of the materials that, I guess Frank Benish said, had gathered together for us in considering the master plan. And this is a chapter out of the handbook, the Planning Board of New Hampshire's handbook for local office officials from the Office of Energy and Planning. And what is talking about the master plan, and in the two thousand and one session of the legislature, they made significant amendments to the statutes affecting the master plan. And this particular section, and we all have this reference in our email, if you go back far enough. And it talks about what is required of a, a master plan. And the required elements are the vision section, which formerly was called goals and objectives, which is what our section, our present master plan is called. And it has a land, and a land use section, just those are the two sections that are required. And then you can add a whole bunch of other, a whole list of other sections. Transportation, community facilities, economic development, natural resources, natural hazards, recreation, utility and public service, cultural and historical resources, regional concern, neighborhood plan, housing, energy. But what we need to do, I think, is to focus and decide how we want to update our goals and objectives section as it, which would now be called the vision section. And it says that the vision section should serve to direct the other sections of the plan. It must contain a set of statements that articulate the desires of the citizens affected by the plan, not only for their locality, but for the region and state as well. And finally, it must set a set of guiding principles and priorities to implement that vision. And finally, must set a set of guiding principles and priorities to implement that vision. So we need to translate that highfalutin language into.
Into.
Practical.
Traps and words.
And then the land use section serves as a basis for the other sections of the plan, and in this, the land use section, the vision statements are translated into physical terms, and should be based on a study of population, economic activity, natural, historical, and historic and cultural resources. So we have those sections in our master plan, and the section must show existing conditions and the proposed location extent and intensity for future land use. So we need to, as we did the last time, update the master plan to reflect what current conditions are. So this is going to take a bit of digging, a bit of work, and if we deciding to do this as a planning board, different members taking different sections and getting the information and, you know, looking at what we have already, and then using resources that are available to update those sections.
Isn't the first section, the whole of the vision section, isn't that driven by the survey, and then the land use part driven by the build-out analysis?
Not necessarily. I mean, those will contribute, that information will contribute to it, but as far as updating with the existing conditions, you know, population economics, et cetera, I mean, that's.
And I was thinking that the land use section, usually they want us to have what our wishes are, what, you know, to show how work of our goals were implemented, is that your understanding of it, too?
Yeah, they say translated into, vision statements translated into fiscal terms, in other words, how is it going to be implemented? So you have a vision, and this is what we want, well, then how are you going to do it?
So with our old master plan, what we have, I think, on the reverse, on the back cover, was just our current zoning picture. And I think that doesn't meet what the state wants, if I understand, maybe we didn't even, yeah, we did have it, I guess, well, yeah, we did have it just in roads and the contours and districts.
That was just the zoning.
We did have more than I remembered, okay. But we never, I think, ended up with a map that shows if we have our, if we get all of our goals and objectives, this is what the town of Jackson would end up being zoned as. Yeah, we want to be there.
We should all have.
Yeah. I think we need two.
I'll get this one back. Yeah, there are two here, one says selectmen meeting, and does anybody else want one?
Julia, I have two.
I should keep that one.
Thank you.
And then you sent around an email with that in it, right? This and this. Oh, actually, I downloaded this through Frank, not through yours. I'm trying to think if it's your email or Frank's.
I gathered what Frank had emailed.
Okay.
I did gather all the master plan stuff at that time that he.
I just downloaded today like fourteen pages of the master plan with the vision and land use section.
Okay.
Yeah, just, but it's exactly what you're saying, there's a vision statement.
All right, that's from our.
I believe so, yeah. Yeah, I think it is. Yeah, it is it. So there's a vision statement, and then, you know, like you said.
Right. So rather than reinvent the wheel, I suggest that we go over what our present master plan is and see what needs to be updated on it. And, you know, our vision statement goals, I think we divided these up into, let's see, we had overall land use, regulatory, natural resources, village character, economy, municipal services, human services. And underneath each of those goals, we had policies and objectives. How many of those objectives have we met? That'd be a good question.
And actually, we could save a little money by just having the background studies on the website and printing only the master plan that we eventually come up with, that might be a good way.
Vision statement and.
Yeah, because the whole, maybe from page eleven or something rather on, is background studies, I'm not sure where it starts, but there's no reason why we have to print that out.
Page twelve, your books.
Twelve.
Okay.
Yeah, history doesn't really change much.
Climate, that's changing.
So maybe as a part of the next time is to, for everyone to go through the present master plan and see what changes need to be made.
Does everybody have one?
I'll pick one up.
I think that's excellent, because we aren't trying to reinvent this, we're trying to.
Update.
Update.
Right.
Yeah, and as I was reading through it today, you know, I saw some changes we need to make, but there were some places where I thought, geez, it pretty much nails it. You know, we changed a word or two. We could plagiarize a little.
Did our homework.
Well, that's the whole point, I mean, this is updating, it's not.
Right, change.
Yeah, just making whatever changes, or, you know, just like we go through the survey and we say, well, that doesn't, we don't need that anymore because we've taken care of that. So it'd be nice to be able to say, well, we've taken care of that. And some of these goals, the objectives are continuing, you know. So I think it would be good for us to not only go through to see what needs to be changed, but if there are whole sections that need more information and individual planning members know where that information can be procured and can start gathering it, I think that would help move us along. Or if there's a particular section that you feel that you've got the expertise to bring it up to date, then let's divvy it up.
Can I get a copy of this from you? Or should I go on the website?
Go on.
Julia, I can forward the link if you want, if you don't have it.
I have.
Do you still have your email address as R A B?
R A B Dundee.
Okay, okay, I tried to email you, but it got sent back to me, maybe I had a written one. R A B Dundee at.
Roadrunner.
Okay. I could, I could just forward you to the link that that's on, if you don't have it, because it came out a couple months, several months ago, I think.
What, that we got it?
You sent it, yeah, Benish.
Benish sent it when we first started talking about.
But it's several months old.
The email.
The email, yes.
Let me just find where it's from and on.
If you want, I'll leave it printed out for you.
Here, I'm going to give it mine and I'll print out another copy for you.
I would then entertain a motion.
I just had a thought.
That's right, you had a question.
Sarah, what's going on there? I was wondering what the question might be if you want to put this on the questionnaire about a polling place, you might be in danger of losing Whitney's as a potential polling place.
I don't think so.
Present lawsuit that's going on against the town.
I don't think there is. That's why I didn't vote for it there.
At some point, we would have to write a new ordinance to accommodate Whitney's, that may be one possible way out of it, or we may have to have it up at the town garage, basically the only other two, the only two places.
Close the school the day you vote, that's simple.
This is just too small, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I would, yeah. And the way they want you to set it up, it isn't big enough, and the Whitney Center is tiny, well, measured in.
And I should be able to just copy this one and get back to you.
That's wrong, I'll just print it out for you.
Are you sure?
Yeah, because I'm pretty sure I've got the.
It's a nice little.
If not, I'll.
If not, give me a call or something, I'll send it back. A lot of foresight there, but hey, we rent it right now. Yeah, we have, that's the option.
Sure.
Close the school, like the workshop date, about, we have three elections in one year, that's three workshops.
Oh, I'm sure the kids will go there.
It's a contract issue to the school, workshops you have. But that's, that's something that's pending.
John, where's the wording that is troublesome? Is it in?
The present, I don't, I can't quote it, but I believe it refers to the old town hall.
But where are those words printed?
It should be in the ordinance.
Is it a?
In a zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
It's the old one.
Zoning.
They count robbers.
That's correct.
I think that it wasn't actually printed, the state guidelines are more liberal than the Jackson ones, and I think Bill Kelly was working off something rather that said, it's around like ten feet, whereas the state says two hundred feet or something like that, it's a huge difference. And then the school got involved and said, well, we don't want electioneering on school land, I think. And so I think right now, and White Mountain Puzzles doesn't want it on their land, so I guess it could happen in the roadway between if that were closed off for that day or something.
It's a fire hazard, that's the reason why they don't want to close it off.
They don't want to close off the road.
So they would leave electioneering for in front of the town hall?
Yes.
There's actually an area that has been proposed for electioneering if that meets the.
Right between where the.
So when we close off the Cover Bridge and you have a dance, that's.
It's a great idea.
That's not a fire hazard.
Town building dance.
Back to Gick's question, I don't know, John knows the answer to his question, where is the wording to that zoning ordinance, because it's not in our zoning ordinance, it's another ordinance.
Another ordinance, I don't know.
Yeah, it's not a zoning issue.
But where would it be?
It's like a dog licensing and so on, that kind of ordinance.
So is it on the website, maybe?
I don't know.
She a.
It just is.
They were, when Linda was here.
It's two stone tablets.
Put it around forever, just want a little break.
Linda Dresch was here, we were having her put together, go through the town reports and everything that had been voted, because you forget, and put them all in a folder. So if you want to know what had been voted, like someone told me, we didn't have a leash law, yes, we did. Come to my house, I have every town report from eighteen something to the present day. That's how I found out this.
And that's something the town clerk ought to be keeping, but Bill Bosford, when I asked him about it, didn't have a clue where things were on that score. He didn't know where ordinance was.
Why did you bother him with something like that?
But they just, they just record the minutes and.
Somehow I thought it was his job.
That's what they do, they do it. You see what I'm saying? She was going through and everything had been voted, she taped it down, put it in a folder.
That's everything voted on a town meeting?
It's, you know.
Okay, but then there's other ordinances that selectmen have put together.
And that they did want to.
Yeah, supposedly any ordinance that gets passed goes to the town clerk, and then what just, what happens with it?
It just goes in the minutes.
No, but I mean, you know, anytime you sign something, we've signed ordinances and we've submitted them to the town clerk, and I'm sure Jeanette is organized about it, but, you know, she hasn't been here forever.
Check it out, be interesting to see what kind of ordinances are actually on the books.
They would, they, very interesting. It's a nice, investigated.
But anyway, I believe that was what the wording was, was the.
Town hall. The old town hall. And that is the problem.
The only town.
It was based, it was based on that, and when we moved to the Whitney Center, everything failed, so everything was off the books after that, so we have to either write a new one or move it to the town garage, maybe probably is what's going to happen.
So which do you mean by the town garage, you mean the one's a new one?
Oh, you have to, yeah, say which one you mean, because if we could all, I mean, the old one.
The old one is discontinued.
Isn't that substantially unheeded?
Sorry?
Might make it a really short March meeting, is it substantially unheeded in the bigger room, meeting area?
Well, it's not town meeting, that's just town.
You're just, you're just talking about voting, polling.
Just voting.
We could still have town meeting here?
No.
Wouldn't be any electioneering in a town meeting, would there be?
No.
Oh, no, so it'd be just, just voting, right?
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
I just, I have a hard time with this electioneering stuff, because everybody that's running for anything is out in front of the post office every Saturday to ask them to vote for them or whatever questions they might have.
On private property.
On private property, that's exactly correct.
And nobody's ever said anything.
Yeah, and if anybody wants to listen to what anybody has to say, they can call my name, it's the phone. Yeah, I know.
Well, they do it in Conway, you see them on the front page, they got signs all over.
But they're two hundred feet away.
No, they're right.
No.
Allen, ten foot wide.
It's not the state law, I think the state law says ten feet, the Jackson ordinance where we had the town hall, and you said two hundred feet.
Now, Bill and, yes, no, when Bill and Jerry both went to whatever meeting it was, whenever it was, it was the state, they went up to Mount Washington Hotel, it was two hundred feet, it wasn't something they made up.
That may have come back then, apparently it's not.
But regardless, this is an ordinance that either the selectmen has to propose for March, don't they? Or, or we do, I think the selectmen do, not us, this is not zoning, we have to deal with it, we have to correct.
Have to do absentee ballots.
But it would be nice to ask the voters, do you want electioneering within ten feet, or do you want electioneering within fifty feet, or, and for this year, there may be a problem, but for after the, you know, it would be nice to see the voters vote on it and see what they want.
Every place I've been, they always voted in the schools.
We used to go all the time to schools.
I remember that, too.
And now, I don't want any.
Who's, who's doesn't want them in the schools?
I'm sorry?
Who said they can have them in the schools?
Who said?
The school board was, I think, discussing the whole electioneering issue and decided they didn't want that on school property.
If they were going to electioneering, they couldn't have it there, that's why it shouldn't have been on school property.
Yeah, I think that's what I.
Should have been on our land, idea. It's called control.
I think the towns that have in the schools, so the ones that have arch gymnasiums, and that's just the biggest.
Creates a facility.
Space facility for the, for the town.
But they're still a school, I mean, they're on school property.
Right, the school, but if they're just using the gymnasium, they're not disrupting the whole school except for gym class.
What they disagreed on and holding a sign out there, they said they.
Maybe it could happen in the library.
Library's not big enough.
No, you couldn't set it up.
I don't mean for a town meeting, for voting.
But for voting, you couldn't set it up the way the state.
They had a certain setup, you know, that handicap, phone access, you know, the whole, I mean, it has to be a certain width, you know, it's very, very particular.
We could get a big tent like they have down at Whitehall.
That's a great idea, too.
Outside.
Okay, well. Not our maybe.
Well, we might want to look at it with the master plan, however, I mean, that is an important issue, you know, where people are going to vote over the next eight years.
Build a new building for it.
Oh, yeah, that's what.
I struggle. So I would accept a.
A motion.
Plowing to a chair.
A motion, pulling into a chair.
I'll second you, somebody first said it, all right.
All in favor?
I got you down there for the second.
I have to miss, maybe not, I mean, just had a surgery.
We're having beer tomorrow, come tomorrow.
Sorry, we'll miss October.
Yes, we have a beer Monday night, and get into our desert house, and kill seventeen crows.
Now they're going to screw with me.
Beer controls coming tomorrow.
They better quit screwing around with you.
We were raising them to put in the freezer. And he went in and pulled the door off, and killed seventeen, and eight families.
I'm going home, I have...
You guys are...
I'm going to have dinner.